To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. Item number two is the invocation for that, our friend Reverend Dennis Hudson. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Can I say thank you to all of you for the training grain? That was awesome. Appreciate that very much. Yes, we enjoyed it. Anyway, let's pray. Gracious Father, we want to come this evening and first of all, say thank you for today. Lord, we tend to appreciate the sunny days and sometimes we don't appreciate the cool rainy days, but they're a gift from you. We want to say thank you. We also want to say thank you that we live in a country where we can participate in the governmental process. Today was a great day in voting, an important day. Lord, we thank you that we have people who will commit their time and service to letting this society function. This is a great city and we know that's a gift from you. We have great leadership, we know that's a gift from you. We say thank you for each of them. And Lord, this evening, I know there's business that has to be done. Sometimes it's mundane, sometimes it's important, sometimes it's stressful. I thank you for those that handle it. I ask that you would bless them. I also just ask that you would lead them and guide them. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you Reverend. Item three is on anticipation, covered on the screen. If there's an item you would like to speak on, please see our City Secretary. Or if it's a public hearing, when I call that, you're welcome to come approach the device and speak. Please silence cell phones, devices, et cetera, so we can have a good meeting. If you need to make a phone call, please exit the chambers. Item number four, the consent agenda. Act, A is action regarding recommended purchase of seasonal Christmas lights and features for citywide decorations. B, action regarding lease agreement with Northwest Plumbing to allow mural to be painted on the north side of Northwest Plumbing Building Bill. C, action regarding interlocal agreement with Tarrant County College for the use of Northwest Campus Police Firing Range. D, action regarding financial management software contract with STW. E, action regarding capital improvements advisory committee recommendation regarding land use assumptions and impact fees. F, action regarding acceptance of special warranty deed for lot 22X Block 1 Spring Creek Edition Phase 2A. G, action regarding purchase of three pickup trucks for public services, drains and water departments. H, action regarding purchase of one 2019 Polaris ATV for Parks Department. I, action regarding purchase of one boom arm mower and tractor for the Drainage Department. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Mary, Cindy second. All of whom favor raise your right hand of those opposed. With the record in effect, we do have a quorum. Mr. Beasley is out of town. Item number five, recognition of 2019 Saginaw Training Grain Festival Committee members for that City Manager, Gabe Brown.
Mayor and Council, October 26th was a great day in Saginaw. I want to recognize the people that made that a great day. The event, the Training Grain Festival, as you know, came off without a hitch and that wasn't by accident. We had a lot of people, both staff, volunteers, to make that a success. I'm reminded that for the low introductory price of $12, you too could own a 2019 Saginaw Training Grain Festival.
Can I put the folks online?
Right.
Show, I should model it. Oh, we have a model in the audience. Thank you.
We still have sizes, youth small, youth medium, and adult sizes available. Want to run through a few numbers with you and recognize some people. First off, 102 volunteers participated on the day of the event, contributing 221 hours. 71 staff members from all departments across the city worked the event, which totaled 822 We had a number of sponsors. Thankfully, a number of those sponsors have indicated their desire to sponsor again next year, so I would guess that we'll be in the training grain business again in the future. This event really, without our committee, couldn't have happened. I want to recognize the members of that committee, as well as the chairs. Mark Andrus from PD, Scott Craver from the Fire Department, Randy Edwards in Public Works, Kelly Henderson in Community Services, Melanie McManus, Randy Newsom, Megan Overman from the School District, Kim Quinn, Debbie Randall, Chief Ragsdale, Keith Reinhardt, Ellen Ritchie, Alora Wackles, Justin and Amy Schneider, Christie Sinclair, Councilmember Tankersley and Jan Young were our committee. And that committee was led by Karen Cromwell and Janice England. So for everybody listening and everybody here, the committee met about every week for the past year. So this successful event was completely due to these folks. If I could, anybody that worked the event, if they could stand up and we could recognize them. And we'll more than likely begin planning for next year. Had a great time and look forward to the next time. Thankfully, I was a little nervous that October 27th, Janice England was going to retire. She has not thankfully announced her retirement, but thankful for Janice and Karen, the committee, and all our volunteers. Yes.
Item number six, presentation regarding human trafficking awareness for that Chaplain Julie Green of Hearts of Faith Ministry. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. I wanted to firstly thank everybody allowing me to speak here before everyone here today. Real briefly here, I'd like to give you some information.
Can you pull my phone down to the place where you can hear me?
Is that better? Okay. I'm Chaplain Julie Green, Hearts of Faith Ministry. I also have the Texas Hearts of Faith Thrift Store. I'm also in the process of opening up safe houses for victims of human trafficking, as well as intake homes. Texas is number two of the United States of human trafficking. Some of us here probably is aware of that, some of us may not be. Everybody thinks it's so close to the border, that's why. Wrong. According to the U.S. Department of Justice, numbered 20% is the border, 80% is right here in our neighborhoods. Every neighborhood. I'm in partnership with the Five Stone Task Force in Fort Worth. I work with them. I also work with Homeland Security and I'm also under the umbrella of Attorney General Paxton. I'm also very much eager and desirable to help save the youth of our nation. These children need to be made aware of what signs to look for and what to do when they see the signs. And I have been working on this since Obama did the proclamation, in which that passed December 28, 2016, January 18, 2017, is National Human Trafficking Slavery Awareness Month. There's been a lot of emphasizing about awareness, but we need to emphasize more about prevention, which that's also in the proclamation. I am waiting on the return call from the School District. And I am tempted, and I'm going to succeed, of getting into the school districts through the entire state of Texas, to going through the whole school district, to making them aware. Every elementary, it's going to be a different way to approach them, the younger stage, different ways to point it out. Middle school and high school, it's a little bit more of a blunt. One of the information here, I'd like to pass this out. This also gives the information at the second page, it's our mission statement, as well as the Attorney General Paxton, information that he sends me to broadcast either through the web or through other contact information. Which this is going to be one objective that's we're going to be putting in through the school auditoriums. Of course, we've got to get it devoted, we've got to get the committee, we've got to go through the whole process to where everybody is acceptable of what and how to go about approaching, what awareness is, what to do about it. There is so many crimes that's being committed, you don't even see it on the news. If you go type Google, Fort Worth, Texas, human trafficking 2019, you're going to get one-third of what's happening. Rich Marmal, they're shutting it down because of all the sting operations. They're in the process of that. There did a lot of different sting operations that has taken place, which some of them, I don't, I'm not aware of it yet, until they asked me to go in there to minister to some of the victims. And then that's why I know a lot of it, but not everything, of course. But I wanted to come before the City Hall of Saginaw. This is my hometown. And I would like to present the opportunity to go into school districts. Let me know what process we need to do. I can bring an agent with me, either somebody from Five Stone or one of the other agents that would be a other type of speaker along with me. And I'd like to present what Attorney General Paxton has sent me to broadcast to make awareness. But I just wanted to present this before the City Council and hopefully I can get voted in to help save these kids.
Thank you ma'am. First of all, we're not affiliated with the School District. They are their own separate entity. They don't listen to us. Then we're. But what could, I guess my question is, what could the city do to help with this?
Here's another opportunity I'd like to maybe present, is set some type of awareness booth, maybe once a month, or when we have the city festivals, or when we do something around doing fundraisers, of something like that. We can get something together with that, if that would be permissible. So can we start setting one up maybe, or what do we do?
We just missed our biggest festival of the year, which was two weeks, or a week ago.
I know.
And it will come around again next year, but not until next October, so.
Okay.
I mean, we have a few gatherings, but not that large throughout the year, so I don't know what else would be appropriate. I'm not sure. I'm not sure how we can best get the word out. Any other folks have any ideas? Any staff have any great ideas how we can approach this? What really steps we can take as a city to help combat this?
Mayor?
Yes ma'am.
I know that there's some school officials in some of the civic organizations, like Rotary Club and the Lions Club. You may want to reach out to them.
Okay.
So I know they're local here.
Okay. All right.
And they often have guest speakers and...
Okay. I've got that on the agenda and I'm going in through the Fort Worth school districts. I'm going in just about every school district there is within a 50 mile ratio. Okay. Anything else?
Oh, thank you ma'am. No, we appreciate it.
Okay, but I just wanted to let everybody know, and if there's anything that you see awareness, look into the information. My contact information's there, contact me.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you Chaplain.
Thank you.
I believe item number seven, those folks are not able to attend, so we will scratch item seven from the agenda. They were not able to make it, we'll catch them on another time. So at 6:13, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on a specific use permit to allow the operation of a mini warehouse facility on approximately 4.65 acres out of Lot 2R4 Block A, Van Zant Place Edition. For that, Director of Public Works, Rick Truss.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is, as you stated, an S U P hearing for, to allow a mini warehouse storage facility within a commercial zoning, community commercial zoning along Bailey-Boswell. Planning and Zoning Commission considered the request on October 8th and denied the request by a vote of two to one. I would just say that some of the discussions that occurred that night, and the applicant can expand and try to respond to those, was actually the height of the structure being proposed is 51 feet high, 51 feet, 6 inches high, that they felt was out of context with the surrounding development in the area. And then secondly, there was some discussion about the lighting, the lighting direction for, that there would be screening for that. There is, of course, the square just to the north that will have multifamily development and that particular development would allow three stories of multifamily adjacent to this S U P request. The other discussion had to do with traffic and access to the site. The site has no direct frontage on either Bailey-Boswell or Odekater. It's in that quadrant, the northeast quadrant of that intersection. There are two driveways that will serve that facility. So as you can imagine, a mini warehouse facility is not a big traffic generator. So in that context, staff was supportive of the request. Jim Maybach is, I believe, the developer of the project. He's here tonight, as is the owner, Gary Havner. And unless you have questions, the staff, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jim or Gary or whoever wants to present.
Yeah, one thing before we step into that. Since this was denied by the Planning and Zoning Board, Brandon, would you explain to us the legal ramifications of that, please?
Absolutely. Because of the denial, by virtue of the denial, it will require a supermajority, three-fourths vote in favor to override the recommendation for denial. In this instance, because we have an absence of a single council member, we would need a unanimous vote in favor in order to override the recommendation for denial. So you have a couple of options as well. Ultimately, you could table this item to the next meeting so that it could be heard by the entire council. That would allow a single no vote and still, the item would still be successful. Or you could take action this evening and, as I say, it would require a unanimous vote.
I think that's up to the applicant. Would you like to move forward, understanding the situation? What would you all like to do?
Yes, we'd like to.
You want to move forward? All right, let's proceed.
Mayor, if I could, I want to add maybe two or three more points. I just want to add also that community commercial zoning would allow 110-story structure to be located, 110 feet, I'm sorry, 110 feet. Or 110 stories, if, you know, if they're within S U P, they could get there.
Saginaw's World Trade Center.
Eight stories or 110 feet, sorry. And then the final thing, I think that early in the process, the applicant met with Alora and myself about the project and we talked about the pros and cons and we wanted to just go on record saying the staff is in support of the request, as we stated in our council memo. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Maybach.
Thank you, Rick. My name is Jim Maybach. I'm with Paco Southwest Realty, based out of Arlington, 1703 North Paco Drive. We've been in the development business for 47 years at our company. We've done projects throughout Dallas, Fort Worth. A lot known for office warehouse and office product. We started doing business with All Storage and Reliable Construction about 15 years ago and have been lucky enough to have been hired by their firm to represent them throughout many cities here in DFW. We'll go over a quick presentation here on the video, but I do, we do appreciate Gabe and the staff. Been very good to work with here in Saginaw. It's very important, especially in smaller cities. I think there was a little bit of a mixed understanding when we were at Planning and Zoning. There was only three members there, so the whole commission wasn't there. And the one fellow that was chairing it had been on, I think, the commission, he said 15 years. And he remembered the case from four years ago. And four years ago, folks, this was a completely different area at the time and a project was completely different. And that's a very, very significant item. We work really close with staff to bring this quality project to your city. And I've been very successful in working with other cities, Garland, Mansfield, Arlington, and several, and three others for All Storage, and they're a first-class outfit to work with. Their construction techniques are considered of their neighbors. And with that, I'll kind of go over the case. I would do want to make mention immediately in this presentation that we have letters of support from four of our neighbors. The EECU is in support, you have that letter. The 7-Eleven is in support, you have that letter. And you have a letter from one other property owner. But then recently, earlier in today, and I have a copy of this email, we've got a letter of support from the apartments that are coming to our north. And we, when we changed this project, we went from nine structures of fortress style, which is the way a lot of stuff was done four years ago, to one building. And that one building looks like an office building. The building that they built, All Storage on Highway 360 in Arlington, that gets over 150,000 cars a day, people called on that building. I had a hand in doing, working with them on that one. People thought it was an office building and they were calling to lease office space. So that explains to you the quality of these structures that are now being built. One way in, one way out, all inside, all air-conditioned, no roll-up doors are visible, heavily landscaped, fire lanes around the entire structure, fully sprinkled. And so with that, with some of the concerns, we changed our case some as well and we want to make you cognizant of that. Instead of 51.6 inches in height, we're now at basically 43 feet. Okay? So that's even under the 45-foot adjoining CC, like the, or the apartment zoning. They can build up to 45, so this won't be any taller than that. The only place where 45 feet is on the corner of the building, where we have just a little higher location, you'll see that on the presentation. So just quickly to back up here, there's the site. Again, we're a secondary location. That's typically where you want to put your storage facilities. They don't need retail exposure. People find them, they know where they exist, and we have plenty of good access points throughout the facility. So again, the retail in the front, and we have letters of support from all our neighbors, almost all of them, and it's a good location for this project. Again, you're going to, the multifamily that's coming to the north, those people need places to store their extra bicycles and, you know, boats and other little things that they, a lot of some of the apartment dwellers don't, aren't able to fit into their unit, but want that quality of living and easy to move in, move out and get to the airport and handle their jobs. So here's a look at, just to start, this is the exterior of the building. The faux windows make it look as an office style. There'll be a lot more landscaping, the trees that are on that first presentation, don't do it justice, but you'll see that further in the presentation. Again, it's a masonry product as well. It'll stand the test of time. You're looking at approximately $10 million facility. That's significant. You could build other buildings back there and not spend that kind of money, because all the finish out and all the sprinkler systems and so forth that are in there. That's the old style on top and then the newest style on the bottom. There's the site again. Here's more detail where the building's located internally on the site. There's one entrance in, one entrance out, there's elevators inside the building to get to the other floors. So there's the layout, the plat surrounding the properties. There's going to be additional retail and office and uses on the west side there, and so those will further buffer the building from the main highway, main roadways and thorough affairs throughout Saginaw. Again, it's community service CC, so we're here for an S U P, so it's not a full zoning change. So this is an allowable use with a specific use permit. It's a secondary location, has limited visibility. And again, these buildings, once they get leased up and stabilized, they have maybe five or six visits a day and that's it. So, you know, it's not a big traffic generator, too. The retail is, and that's fine, that's what you want there, but, so it, you know, its footprint from a environmental standpoint is very low as well. So with taking, we had two buildings were proposed at P&amp;Z. They were on the eastern side. We've removed those buildings as well. So we lowered the size of the building, we removed two smaller exterior buildings that were still fortress style with brick walls on the back and then roll-up doors on the inside facing. We removed those as well. Being cognizant that that will give us additional areas to drain the property and additional area to put landscaping and trees. It's a low utility, it's, you know, we reduced the size. So moving on, you'll see that's Building B and C, those have been removed from the plan, being cognizant of the concerns that we heard from, at the P&amp;Z meeting. We had no opposition at all at P&amp;Z. And I don't know of any opposition that we have here this evening from anybody either that wrote a letter of opposition. Again, that's the entrance and exit is in the pink up there. Shows you how to get in and out of the building. So no people loading out in the parking lot, doing any of that kind of stuff. We did increase the, city staff wanted additional stub-outs, which we were providing to the adjacent property owners that will help develop the rest of the site with our development. We've worked out the access issues that were requested. So again, we've reduced, taken the two other smaller buildings off the plan. And with doing that, we're going to be able to, now you see, we're going to be able to add, keep a lot of those mature trees that are adjacent to our property and then add more trees up against the building, as well as on the other side of the area. So it'll be well landscaped and it's, will be very cognizant of our retail neighbors and, as well as the apartments to the north. These are the types of plants we use on our facilities. These plants vary, we want some different colors. It's not the same anonymous plant over and over again. We want to, and we try to use plants that are very low in water usage. That's good for the environment. So again, our lighting, there was some talk about lighting. These are LEDs that we use and these are wall pack LEDs that point straight down on the perimeter of the building. So we'll not, won't be any light pollution given across the parking lot to any of the other users. It'll be lit so that you have security and you can see the building, but it won't be overdone. Here's a picture of the interior where they come in and they load and unload and then go up the elevators if they need to, or they can have access to the other parts of the building. We have carbon monoxide aerators that pull any of the, when they drive in and drive out, so we're cognizant of all that and make sure nobody gets sick. And it's just the way, this is the way the industry's going. These are the types of facilities you see in the most, you know, progressive cities throughout Texas and Oklahoma. That's primarily where a lot of the All Storage operations are. So here's your elevations. You can see that this building, we try to make it look like an office building and it could later be converted to an office building, when you really think about it. You know, that might be many years down the road, but anyhow, with that, the submittal is completely different than it was before and I think we've, we're coming to Saginaw, we're putting our best foot forward and we're putting a facility that I think will be used by the community. And again, in the blue, we kind of highlighted some of the new proposals that I've already gone over. And again, it's an S U P request, the height's been lowered. And then we did some line of sight. So it's important that you, you know, the people that are driving on the main roads that are on our perimeter, that they won't, they'll barely see the building. They'll see it between the buildings, because they're driving by. And so we'll try to put our signage in that location where they catch a quick glimpse of the facility. We have set office hours, so we're not operating late at night. We're not open on Sunday. Well, yes, we are on Sunday in this one. Some of them, they're not open on Sunday, but limited hours on Sunday. And so here's some pictures of our other projects in some of the other cities that we've been, done business in. And that's a picture of the inside of that, the building on Highway 360. I've been in that facility myself a couple of times. And there's another picture of the interior of that facility and we have boxes and we have all the packing supplies that people need when they're packing up and moving, whether they're moving in or out or to another location. There's another picture of the inside. So that kind of, and here's some of the other locations that we've done projects in the last couple of years. Mansfield's not on there. Mansfield's not on there, but there's a very nice facility in Mansfield. There's two or three in Arlington, and there's, there's some other cities that we have enlisted up there, but, and these, again, they're state of the art. I think they're very good looking buildings. And then we have our integrity pledge that we work with in the, during the construction. That's becoming a bigger thing. We want to be cognizant of drainage, of construction materials, while we're on the site, coming in and out, keeping it clean, making it drain properly, and putting up the silk fences, and, so we have this pledge, and that, this, we have, that we assign out there so people know they can call the headquarters there in Arlington, and somebody will be responding to them to make sure that we are being good neighbors. So with that, that's our presentation. You'll notice the, we're using different paints, different facades, we're mixing in some brick, mixing in tilt wall, mixing in the composite of the tilt wall to show the trends. We have awnings on the building, good LED lights, so I think I've covered everything I wanted to say. I always try to be cognizant of your time, but I'm happy to address any, any questions that you have on the project. We have one of our draftsman architects here, Ozil. We have the property owner who's here in favor, and his broker as well, and we have our engineer here that can answer any questions on drainage or, or access to the property or the utilities.
Council questions? Mary?
I'm happy that you will be having landscaping that requires minimal irrigation.
Yes.
But do you have, will you have built-in irrigation for times when we have these bad droughts? Will you be able to have it sprinkled?
Yes, it will be sprinkled.
Okay.
Yes, but the automatic system, which we can adjust accordingly, you know, in the winter, turn it off so we don't have ice, and then in the summer, it will be running, and if we need to run it more to keep our plants alive, we will do that.
And for Gabe or Rick, do we have any other storage facilities in the city that are climate-controlled? We don't?
I'm not aware of any. Are you aware of, Larry?
Climate-controlled?
No. No, ma'am.
So I think that's a big plus. That's something that a lot of people really want. So I think that would be a, a good addition for the city.
That's a very good point, Mary, that you're making, because my wife won't let me store anything that's not in climate control. Because when you go back to get it, it's deteriorated.
So I think, you know, it is an appropriate use for that property, and I think it would be great.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Hi, thank you for your time, sir. How many units are we talking about at this facility?
Thirteen hundred.
That's a lot.
Yeah, you say that, and that's very interesting, because they're members of the Storage Society, I don't know the exact name, because I get their emails too, because I stay up on their trends, but they've done a, an analysis for this location, and how quickly they can get it leased, how quick they can stabilize it, and make sure it's making an appropriate return. Because when they build these, they want to build them for longevity and for quality and for the customers, and obviously Saginaw's growing like the rest of the DFW is, and they've chosen this location because they believe this area is gonna require that demand and not overbuild it.
And question about one of the comments that you made, that this building is made to withstand the test of time. Is there any way that these buildings are designed to be like storm shelters since we've had, you know, tornadoes and strong winds and things come through here? Are they designed to, people seek shelter there?
It may, it may be one of the better places to go, other than the grain silos, but, but they are masonry construction, they will withstand wind speeds of, and our engineers here, I think the wind speeds on the building typically are like seventy-five miles an hour, then ninety miles an hour, even over a hundred.
I mean, I saw the bad location, given the number of windows or the, but I wouldn't consider it a storm shelter.
Okay.
High winds maybe, but tornado, you never know, right?
Right, well, I was thinking, you know, away from the windows, you know.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie?
I've got a couple of questions. One, you said there was only one way in and one way out. Have you taken into consideration the two one-way streets, lanes that EECU and the ER have feeding into that one way in, one way out?
Well, what I meant was one way in, one way out of the building itself. You have an entrance on the west side and an entrance on the east side, and so people can drive through, drop their stuff off, and drive out the other side. Now, there's two entrances, main entrances to the property, so we feed on, onto those main drives that the, the other folks were using.
So you're gonna actually be coming in then off of Old Decatur and between EECU and the ER? And there again, you've still got a one-way lane feeding into where you're gonna be driving through there?
I think that the lanes are two, two lanes now, let me find that drawing. And our engineers here, you wanna talk about that? Get to the site plan, yeah. Because we, we sat down and at a number of meetings with the staff, and we talked about the, there we go, the entrances and the fire lanes and the circular laydown that they need for hose protection and so forth, but go ahead.
Good evening, Brandon Middleton, Kimberly Horn. Yeah, so the, the median break off of West Bailey Boswell between EECU is a full twenty-four foot width fire lane, so two lanes of traffic, and they're also having a drive connection, if I can point with this, going to Old Decatur. So we'll have two access points, and then meeting with city staff, even though from a code standpoint, we could have probably gotten away with just a single fire lane, like around the front, and maybe hammerhead turn around. We've agreed to doing a full fire lane loop around the entire facility, so, but it's intended to be two lanes, one lane each direction, twenty-four feet minimum.
Okay, then let me ask you this. If they're coming in off of Bailey Boswell into the unit between the two buildings, I'm assuming you're gonna have some kind of gate or some kind of security thing to keep people out that don't belong in there?
Yeah, so after hours, the, the doors are shut, the rolled down doors are shut at the two ends of the, the building, but during hours, they're open, and you pull into a parking spot, and, let's see, there's a couple photos of how large that area is. So you kinda pull into a parking spot, and you can go to the front office and buy boxes or what have you, or, or talk about renting a facility.
Okay, so there's no security gate involved in it then?
During hours, no.
There's two gates.
Oh, yeah, there we go. Yeah, so there, sorry, there is a security gate with the Knox box of fire protection on the southeast corner of the building, and then also on the southwest corner of the building for security purposes.
There again, I'm concerned more with ECU and the ER, an already established building there, and if you're gonna pull up and try to now punch in a code or do something to get in the building, you're gonna be blocking their drive-through trying to come out, and the ER ambulance is trying to come out.
Well, Mr. Tucker, I don't know if you can see my pointer here. No, I guess you can't.
Can't see it.
No.
Spin around. There you go.
There you go.
Well, disappears when it gets on screen.
You can come point right now.
Yeah.
There we go. Yeah, so today, the fire lane has kinda stopped here. We're gonna do some complete loop, and the gate I was talking about is here and here. That secures that gate.
So, yeah, so that won't be lost, that's what you were saying.
Yeah.
So if you come in here, you can just loop around, come back around, or?
So that, yeah. So then the other gate's up there.
So when you come in, that entrance, you're gonna have to go.
And this is where most of the people come in, you do add, come in through here, and then we drive out, we loop around the other. So, yeah, we have a lot of support, so we will go with this.
Yeah, we've got, I've got a thing here from EECU, but this is not from the, the branch itself right there, you've got this from downtown.
Yeah, the branch is contracted downtown, we're sure we got appropriate group. That's a good, good, yeah.
And let me ask you this question, and I hate to even bring it up, but what about the crime in, in here? And I'm looking at the, the extra load we're putting on the PD.
Yeah, again, they, we subscribe to the national membership on that, and storage units such as these new ones, because there, there's advantages on site, there's set hours, there's limited access, there's good lighting, it's, they're not crime producers.
Okay, so after your hours of operation, the doors are closed, the people can't get in?
That's correct, absolutely.
Basically, I can't go get my stuff at three in the morning.
No.
Right, just during those business hours that you had on the screen.
That's right.
And so the whole thing is fenced around?
Yes, we're, well, we're fenced over there behind the ECU, we have, and the medical, we've put a, that we, they asked for a stockade wood fence, and we agreed to that.
I'm talking about the other three side. Is that fenced around it, or is it just fenced, where you have all these trees right there? Is there a fence around it? What I'm saying is that they, those parking lots are in the back there, like if somebody wants to store a boat or something back there, are you guys outside store?
No, no outside store.
And then go to the whole area around the property behind the EC, you know? So this is what's open to have convenience for customers to be able to park and go in the office and meet in water volumes, things of the kind, but these gates here, you know, are ready, you can move them back there. And it is one-way circulation through the building, just to make that point. This is the entrance, then you have the exit, so exiting, stacking happens within the walls, which is a leak, so that, that gate will open to, to leave the property, and this is an entrance, right? So there's no stacking problem there, no stacking problem here since it's soaking into the property, the gate itself.
So why do we have a lot of parking spots in the back? Just out of curiosity.
Sorry, these are required for orderings.
Okay.
This project isn't seeking any interference, right? So it needs all the, all the parking departments that this used to have, you know, as a security requirement.
Charlie, give me other questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Chief, do you have any data on, I mean, we've got storage places here in town already, I mean, they're small compared to this, but have you got any kind of data on the crime that we have at those?
The two storage facilities we have, one on North Saginaw Boulevard, four hundred block, and on Belmont, I would say first, they're not comparative designs to this one. In the, in the time that they've been around, there's probably one or two burglaries at those two facilities a year. No violent crime to speak of. Occasionally, with the outside access to those facilities, there's some, there might be somebody that occupies and, you know, physically occupies one for, for a period of time until they get evicted. But I will say this, that the environmental design, or from a crime prevention standpoint, the environmental design of this building would be considerably different and produce less crime or calls for service for us, and probably way less than some of the close neighbors to it like Walmart.
Yeah, we're, you know, the people come in, they, they, they're in an enclosed environment. They have security cameras. Do these other places have security cameras or on-time, or managers on-site? No. That's when things happen.
The reason I'm concerned about this is you've got a bank sitting right out in front of this, and that would be a kind of a prime spot for somebody to wait for the people at the bank to get there in the first thing in the morning and try to come in?
Well, our gates would be closed, so they wouldn't have access, they could drive behind there now, and if you put in other uses back there that don't have the low volume, I mean, again, we've got lighting, we've got the appropriate accesses for fire, these, these are not crime generators. They could wait anywhere, you know, they could be waiting in the house a block away, so, you know, the, these buildings, we, we've worked very hard to keep up with the, number one, not only the national standards, but staying ahead of those, and building quality facilities that have monitored systems, cameras, lighting, restricted hours, gates, very nice landscaping. It's a quality project, and we're happy to be here and hopefully do business with Saginaw as well.
Valerie, you have a question?
Well, I think they answered most of the questions I had, okay.
Okay. Patrick?
Just have a couple of comments and some questions. This is an interior lot, it's essentially landlocked by other developments. Makes sense that the only other development that may fly would be multifamily coming from the north. It might accommodate a hundred and ten units at four point six acres. A hundred and ten units, about six and a half million bucks, which would generate maybe thirty thousand dollars a year in property tax. That thirty thousand dollars a year in property tax wouldn't pay for the service for a hundred and ten apartment units, would it? This is ten million dollar facility, very low traffic, would generate somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-five thousand dollars a year, more than what an apartment expansion would, and it would pretty much pay for itself in terms of service, police units. And I mean, the way I'm looking at it, that's about what we spend on half of our resource officer right now, is that right? About forty-five thousand a year? So if we do this kind of development, I think we're getting fair equity offset in terms of payment into the city from property tax in order to police it. If we were to put a hundred and ten apartment units there, no deal. And really, that's all that that interior lot could support, in my mind, in terms of development, is an apartment expansion. There are no big boxes anymore that are looking for ten acre tracts, and I think even with the frontage on Old Decatur, we're only getting about eight and a half, maybe nine developable acres total. So with this developer leaving the frontage on Old Decatur for the future retail development, and really going out of their way to tuck this building in behind our existing retail and service, I, I don't know that there's a better way to treat that piece of property, quite frankly. I really can't think of one.
And that's typically where these, where we build these units. We want convenience to the neighborhoods, the customers, whether you're in a house or an apartment, or transitioning from job to job, that's a lot of pe, and they want, these people that will store in there, they want to keep their stuff nice, they want to keep it secure, and when they go to get it, they want to make sure it's in good condition and it's in a safe environment.
Patrick, do you have anything else?
So I have. Thank you, good presentation.
I have one more question. Not what they were normally asked, that little entrance right there, so when they develop that behind there, they're gonna be able to come in there too, right? So are you gonna put another gate there on your design here?
The northeast corner.
The northeast corner, yes. So when they build the departments or whatever on the, past that, are y'all gonna put another security gate there?
That's just our approach to the dumpster, this is the dumpster area here.
No, but what I'm asking you, are you gonna have an entrance when they build, when they build out above that, are you gonna have some kind of entrance to that way?
Why not propose a bathroom? Why not propose a maximum level?
At the moment, but are you going to do it later? That's what I'm asking.
I mean, we can provide easement if, if that's there. We're open to access easement, you know, if that's a concern. But since it's very gated, I mean, it probably defeats the purpose of trying to keep the facility secure to only customers and, you know, uh, people renting, uh, rather than, you know, bringing in, you know, uncontrolled access. I mean, maybe we can make like an emergency only fire lane, you know, that's fire department can have an open, they need to get.
But you're not going to open it at some, that's what I was hoping.
Yeah, we want to continue to have controlled and secure environment for our customers. If the city wanted something like that, um, where the, the apartment complex got access, um, we could put a walk gate. We could put a walk gate in the fence, where, and you could even put code there, you know, if you've got to have a number to get through. If they, you know, instead of the, driving around, but, you know, if they're coming or going, they've got boxes, so typically, yeah, and, yeah, and you, and you don't want overflow from the apartment and people trying to party back there or hang out or something where, you know, it's less, you know, less visible to the, for the police department, so.
Anything else, Valerie? Mary? Yes, ma'am.
Just to build on what Patrick said and to kind of state it in a different way, um, the goal of any city is to find the highest and best use for each piece of property that is built upon. And I think this would qualify very much so as the highest and best use for this piece of property, not to mention the fact that it's going to be very attractive. It will be an asset to the community.
And I would agree with that comment, um, from a, uh, in my presentation, you heard me say it many times, it's a secondary location. It's not, it can't go, it's not going to go full retail. Uh, retail is not going to be back there. You're not going to stick restaurants back there because the people don't see them, they can't find them, they won't use them. So, and these are good uses for those types of, you know, good sites. I mean, if it was developed all at once with a Kroger development, it'd have been a 20-acre development, and they'd have big ac, big locations. They'd be fronting one of sides, and then you can do pad sites around it. Uh, I've, I've worked on a couple of Kroger deals in my career, but, um, they already have good retail uses there in the front. Those are clean businesses, uh, attractive. And again, these buildings now are being built to a whole new standard. And you're going to see some of those other ones, you're not, number one, nobody wants to build them, you know? The cities aren't going to let them in because there's, there's no tax dollars for it, you know? They go out in the perimeters, way out in the perimeters. So, uh, uh, these are what, uh, expanding cities and populations and, you know, I hate to use the word millennials, but they're transitional group of people. They don't like to be tied down. They want flexibility. They don't want to take care of a yard. And so they're the ones that'll lease, lease these, these units.
All right, Mary, anything else? You got, all right. Um, so a couple of other things I had, um, you know, look at this project, I think this is the absolute best use for this, this land. There's very limited options for this piece of property, and I think we've covered that very well. Um, you know, talking about security that Charlie brought up, the more I look at this property and the more I look at the facility you laid out, it's a fortress. It's, it's not, it's built for security, different from the, the old timer, um, open, uh, storage facility, storage unit that, that we're used to. That's, this is a, a next generation, so I, I appreciate that. And I, I see, um, what you're trying to do, and I think that's very good from, from our perspective and also from your client, because you want to keep their stuff safe. That's your, that's your business. Uh, so yeah, I, I have no security concerns at all about this. I think it'll be very low usage for our, our PD folks and very safe for the, the surrounding folks as well. So, um, with that, any other questions, counsel? Uh, anything else, staff? And thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your comment.
Uh, if not, I will entertain a motion.
Did we close the public hearing?
Oh, we did not. Sorry. And I did not. Uh, anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this item, my apologies. I, thank you, Bren. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? This, now's your time. You don't have to, you just can approach the, the podium. If not, then at 6:54, I will close the public hearing. Now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, before I make this motion, let me make sure that this motion is consistent with the original denial motion, or are we approving an S U P, Bren? Because the way it was presented was to deny.
You, you can simply make a motion to approve, notwithstanding the recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the S U P presented here tonight.
Thank you, Patrick. I have a second? Mary, a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? There are none. Gentlemen, welcome to Saginaw. Good luck. We, we look forward to working with you. All right, so now at item number nine, consideration action regarding adoption of ordinance, a meeting of zoning regulation by established in overlay district along Saginaw Boulevard generally described as, well, you can read it, it's a very long one. Uh, for that, City Manager Gabe Ryan.
Oh, yeah, and counsel is.
I'm sorry, um, Valerie and Patrick, do you want to say your?
I'm going to recuse myself because I have property.
Okay. Thank you, Valerie. Patrick?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I will be recusing myself this evening. The purpose of that recusal is spelled out in an affidavit that was provided to the council back in February of this year, is given to Janice this evening for public. Uh, if they would like to read that affidavit, they're more than welcome to, and I've also asked that affidavit be included in the minutes. I will be abstaining from the vote and also be abstaining from any discussion on the matter, but we'll sit in the room.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, Gabe.
Mayor and counsel, if you recall, uh, we last considered and held a public hearing on this item in December of 18, so it's been almost a year since this was revisited. Um, everything that was presented previously was included in your packet in the agenda item. Happy to answer any specific questions. Just want to address a few things, what this ordinance means. So, uh, between now and a year ago, uh, our friends in Austin have changed some of the, um, abilities and, and, um, powers that cities have regarding exterior construction. You'll find some of these things in the overlay ordinance. They're not enforceable. I've talked with the city attorney. Uh, so we couldn't require masonry construction standards, whether in the overlay district or anywhere in the city. Uh, that has stayed in what is for your review and action tonight because we see it as something that we may use as a point to incentivize in the future. So that is, if we get a business come in, we can say, uh, potentially, here's our desired standard. If you want to abide by this, then we could entertain incentives. So, um, if Bren wants to, anything further? Uh, that was a question that came up, just wanted to address.
Certainly, it's, uh, I've briefed counsel on this issue previously. Um, this is one of the two bills that were the most onerous to come out of Austin during this last legislative session. House Bill 2439 now preempts cities from dictating the use of particular exterior material if an alternate material that the developer chooses to use is otherwise permitted in one of the last three model codes that were published. Um, but as, as Gabe said and based on my recommendation, I, I see no need to strip them out of the ordinance. They just simply won't apply unless we have the voluntary consent of the building owner, and that consent can be, uh, binding if we have some sort of mutual considerations such as an economic development incentive, um, or it can be voluntary, uh, on the part of the developer or building owner themselves. So, uh, in addition, uh, the, you have some articulation standards in here. Uh, you all may recall that the bill also preempts any aesthetic method, uh, that we may dictate. However, it's only preempted to the extent any of the technical construction codes speak to alternate, uh, articulation methods, and I'm not aware of any in particular. And so, uh, my feeling is those should stay as well and would otherwise be applicable. Uh, finally, the last comment that I would make is with respect to the involuntary, the amortization of legal non-conforming uses that would result, should this ordinance be approved, uh, the date that was inserted as the 10-year, um, eclipse essentially of the right to continue illegal non-conforming use was established as December 18th of 2028. I think that ties with, uh, the date during which, the month during which we last had a, uh, robust discussion on this ordinance. And so if you all are inclined to entertain this, that date could obviously be moved forward to correlate more closely with today's meeting.
So a few comments. The overlay, uh, was brought forward for discussion, uh, to promote the idea of a hometown, uh, small-town feel on Saginaw Boulevard. So what that does is, um, there are a number of uses, land uses that would be prohibited should you take action. This would be enforced. There are 11 of these, and they made the prohibited list because, uh, primarily there's outdoor storage, or there are items, um, land uses that you'd, you'd see more commonly in a light industrial area. To give you an example, if you think of a hometown or Main Street, would you think of a used car lot? More than likely not, or a new car lot for that matter. These are uses that are more common to see on a highway, uh, or a, a Main Thoroughfare. The ordinance also outlines a number of uses that would require, um, specific use permit, which gives the city council now and into the future more controls as to what would come in, uh, onto the Boulevard in the future. Um, I can't prove this, but we might lead, lead the nation in, uh, car washes and gas stations. Uh, so that would, these would be things that would come to the council as a specific use on a case-by-case basis. Uh, one other item, in addition to building articulation, setbacks, landscaping, things like that, would be the, um, overlay ordinance would require monument signage capped at 12 feet in height. So if you look at the outskirts of our city limits and you see new development that's in Fort Worth, unfortunately in many respects, you see uniform signage that's monument, you see a uniform look and feel, um, and that's no accident. New businesses want to be in attractive and clean-looking environments. Um, one thing I want to emphasize, should the city council approve this overlay, this is a, probably a 25-year project. Uh, everything that is in existence would be allowed to remain, um, until such time that were amortized or, uh, wanted to rebuild and, and then would fall under the, the new regulations the overlay provides. Um, this is one step potentially in redevelopment for the Boulevard, but it's got to start somewhere. The council chooses to take no action or we don't adopt an overlay, I think, and I mentioned this before, it's just reasonable to assume that the way Saginaw Boulevard looks now is the way it'll look in the future. So absent a change in standards, um, or land use controls, we'll have, um, the same type and quality of development that's already existing. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Uh, talked to a few property owners regarding impacts. One example, and I believe it's been almost a year, but Hills Paint and Body, so longtime business, they don't own their building, they lease their building. If they were to rebuild today, they don't have the zoning in place that allows them to continue operating. Um, we outlined through drafting the ordinance, a specific use for, um, auto body repair that would allow the council discretion on a case-by-case basis with the S U Ps. So, um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions here, feedback.
Mary?
Um, I expressed, I guess 11 months ago when this first came before us, that I thought it would be a great idea to have this overlay district. And since that time, I'm even more in favor of it. Uh, we've done a lot of things in the city to beautify the city. Um, we have the grant from TaxDOT for additional landscaping on the Boulevard. We have approved a mural for Northwest Plumbing. We've got some painting in the park on the cement structures. Um, what else have we done? Oh, wrapping the electrical boxes. Am I forgetting anything? So, you know, we've made such progress in this area, and I would hate to see us not go the full nine yards and do everything we can to continue to beautify the city. And I think, uh, we're very, very, very reasonable with the businesses. I would also like to remind any business owners, if they're listening, or if they're in the, in the, here in the audience, the B I G program, which is Building Improvement Grant, if any of those business owners aren't aware of this program, we will match up to $5,000 in improvements. They have to apply and meet certain qualifications, but we've had many, we've had what, eight or 10 businesses take advantage of that, and I think still some businesses aren't aware of it. So knowing that, also I think that might spur them on to maybe even make some of these, uh, improvements on their own, even ahead of the requirements. Knowing that that program exists, they might be spurred on to even act before they're required to. And I know we have not been able to attract certain businesses here because of that look that you first get when you come in from the south on Saginaw Boulevard. Um, so that would alleviate that problem. And psychologically, I think when someone driving by a, uh, an area with retail, we have many, many, many vehicles coming up and down Saginaw Boulevard that don't live here. Probably more of our traffic is from people that don't live in Saginaw. And, you know, if they saw a really nice, modern, pretty space on the Boulevard, they might be more likely to stop there. But psychologically, if they see kind of a rundown, not a very appealing look, they, they may not even want to visit. You know, they may not even want to stop there and find out what the businesses are. So for those reasons, and probably some others that I have forgotten, I'm, I'm fully in favor of this program.
Thank you, Mary. Cindy?
I'm fully in favor of the program as well, but there's some, uh, items in this particular ordinance that concern me. Uh, we're looking at, uh, Section 2D, the prohibited uses. Uh, first of all, I have concerns with this because we have so few places that we have in Saginaw where we can actually put businesses, and the main Boulevard is one of them. Um, from the beginning, I've been opposed to this particular item simply because, like our city manager said, that, uh, they were put on this list because of outdoor storage. Well, rather than spelling out specific business types, why don't we just say, let's prohibit outdoor storage, and then let the business decide for itself, um, if they can meet that criteria or not? Secondly, um, in the prohibited uses, we have auto sales, new and used. That was brought up also by our city manager. But requiring a special, specific use permit in Section, um, D1B, item number six, we have an auto car rental, and I don't understand why that is here for a specific use permit and not under the prohibited list. I'm also concerned that, uh, the prohibited list, the way that it's written, may be short-sighted because there may be businesses that we're not aware of that'll be cropping up in the next five or 10 years that we don't want on the Boulevard, and we have no way to exclude them, um, from establishing a business there. Outside of the rest of it, I'm fully in agreement with it, but I just have a huge problem with that one section.
Is there, Cindy, is there any way you would propose to rewrite the section that would be more amenable to you?
Um, yeah, I'd asked, um, to consider putting in things like, uh, for example, no outdoor storage, you know, um, into that section and replace auto sales, new and used. you know, into that section and replace auto sales, new and used, building material sales, new and used. I mean, there are ways, just like the storage people that were here, they have found ways to control that and keep everything inside. And I think we're hurting ourselves by not permitting these businesses here.
So, I can address the comments, and they're good comments. There was discussion regarding addressing outdoor storage. So, the issue becomes, if you put a new requirement in, you create non-conforming uses, that is, uses that are in existence currently that don't meet the standard. The less onerous way was to outline prohibited uses as we have. So, to address the point why newer used auto sales and as an SUP, council discretion, we would allow auto rental, it's generally a number, right? So, if you have a car lot, you're going to have an inventory that's pretty constant. A rental fleet, especially some of the tracks that we have available, if we were to get a rental, location is going to be pretty small. So, that's why that made the SUP is opposed. We can review the prohibited lists, and again, if the goal of the council is to have a hometown, small-town feel, these are the type uses that probably don't lend itself to if we try to envision a Main Street. So, auto sales, new and used, we already addressed that. Most dealerships are along major thoroughfares anymore. Building material sales, these are, would be like commercial construction lumberyard, which we have, like United Forest Products, they're in an industrial zone, a better zoning for that. Cargo containers, landscaping service, issue with that is outside storage, machinery sales or repair, mini warehouses, motorcycle sales, non-depository financial institutions, RV rentals, rental yards for heavy equipment, and stone and monument sales. So, again, we're not saying we don't want these uses in Saginaw. We're just saying that if the desire is to keep a small-town, Main Street-type feel directly facing on the Boulevard, it's not an appropriate use. They could go to any light industrial or heavy industrial.
Well, again, I still think the places to put these in Saginaw are limited, and my personal opinion is that I still think it's uninviting, and I think we can address this a different way. And we've talked about that over the last several months, and nothing has changed, and I haven't changed my opinion on that either because I, you know, I'm here for the citizens and I'm here for the businesses.
Right, and again, don't mean to beat a dead horse, but absent any changes on the Boulevard, what's there now is what we can expect in the future.
Cindy, anything else? Charlie?
Thank you.
You go. All right, so, I'm really in favor of this ordinance for several reasons. There are lots of places along the board that I'm not proud of, and I think most people would agree with that. We did get a note that I would like to read a few months back. It's an email that Alora received. She'd been working with Brahms, trying to bring her Brahms to Saginaw, and she does it a lot with different companies. So, Alora's question to this email, this lady was, you know, why, I've shown you several locations, why the southern part of Saginaw you're against, and here's this lady's response. She said, "I'm sorry for my delayed response," et cetera, et cetera. She said, "Regarding your question about southern Saginaw Boulevard, the older, albeit solid trade area, just looks very old and tired. With the cost of a property, impact fees, construction, et cetera, we want to be an area that is newer, that we'll pull in new," and that's in all caps, "customers. I hope this makes sense. Thanks." And she's Director of Real Estate for Brahms. So, that's our perception now as a city. This will help, help with that slowly over time. This is not a radical change. As Gabe has mentioned, this is something that in 10 years can make a difference. This is something that can be our legacy on the council, because I sure as heck won't be on the council in 10 years. But it could be something that can really positively impact Saginaw, the look and the feel of Saginaw. I like a lot of it. I realize it may not be a perfect list, and I do like, though, that things, some things require specific use permits, so the council can make a judgment call on these other items. And I think that's fine on a case-by-case basis. I like just the list, and I like how it's laid out. One thing you didn't, we talked about, Gabe, was explaining the time period and the amortization and how it would work exactly. Would you go over that?
Yeah, and I may defer to Bren. So, prohibited uses that are currently in existence, of which there are a few, I believe there are only three that directly, they were the payday lenders. So, they would have 10 years to operate. At such time, they could request a variance or some sort of appeal of the council to continue doing business?
It's, it would be the Board of Adjustment. So, the way it works is, it's a mathematical calculation. It, the law allows for the termination of a grandfathered use without it constituting a taking of property without just compensation under the Constitution, provided that you demonstrate that the business has been afforded the opportunity to recoup all of its investment into the business, not the land, because the land can be reused for something else, but the business itself up to and including the last day that the use was declared lawful. Any investment, so, if and when this is passed, from its effective date on, we have a 10-year window. Any investment made into the business while it is legal non-conforming is not considered an investment that is subject to recoupment because you are investing in a business that is otherwise unlawful. So, the ordinance provides for an automatic 10-year period where the council legislatively declares that we believe 10 years is an adequate time for each and every and all of the affected uses to have recouped the investment in the business throughout the term that it was, in fact, lawful. But, in order to honor due process, you have to afford the business owner the opportunity to dispute the 10-year automatic period by appealing to the city's quasi-judicial board, which is the Board of Adjustment. It is a judicial determination. The business owner is able to put on evidence. You basically have a mini-trial where the business owner is able to put on evidence through tax returns, receipts, et cetera. The, we were not, and evidence of their profits, okay, that we were not able, over that 10-year period, to fully amortize our lawful investment in the property, to fully recoup our investment, such that we are financially put back in the shoes of that point in time when we originally started the business. If they're able to demonstrate that there is additional lawful investment that remains unrecouped through profits, we are required, the law requires, that they be given additional time. But that additional time is not a feel-good amount of time. In other words, the Board of Adjustment doesn't have the authority to say, "Well, you're a good neighbor. We like your business. It's not an SUP. We're not authorizing them to continue to operate because they've made a good case." We're simply determining mathematically whether there's any additional time that's, on an accounting basis, legally necessary for them to continue to operate, and not a day longer. So, that's how that process works. That's the appeals process. The only way to determine legislatively through zoning that a business should be allowed to continue to operate, that it's in the best interest of the public health, safety, welfare, and general morals of the community, is through a zoning amendment that comes before council. That is not the mechanism that is anticipated and accounted for in the amortization process.
So, the Board of Adjustment will be the final hearing. It does not come to council after that?
It does not come to council. The Board of Adjustment renders their ruling. That is appealable to District Court or County Court, and it goes through the court process, and the only issue is mathematics. That's it.
Thank you, Bren. Oh, go ahead.
So, let's say the Board of Adjustment agrees that this company hasn't fully recouped its investment. Then, do they, how do they determine how long it will take for them to recoup it, and do they have to keep coming back and proving it, or?
No. So, the way it works in practice, and based on my experience, we did this, I spent a considerable amount of time assisting the city of Kennedale when they enforced their amortization regulations on the sexually-oriented businesses that were located at the entrance to the city. Those were originally in Forest Hill. The city of Kennedale entered into a boundary adjustment with Forest Hill to bring them in since everyone believed they were in Kennedale anyway. And the way that it's done, and they did this for their corridor as well, some of the auto repair shops, the way that you do it is you retain a CPA. The city retains a CPA. You make discovery requests. The board has statutory authority under state law to compel the attendance of witnesses, to request documents be produced, subject to enforcement by a District Court, and you have an expert witness who essentially testifies based on the profits and losses and the cost, the demonstrable cost that went into the business, that there is a, you know, this much in total dollars that remain unamortized, and that with the anticipated profits, the yearly, annual anticipated profits, it will take another year and six months, for instance, to fully amortize it, and the board issues an order. That order overrides the 10-year period set forth as the default in the overlay ordinance.
Sure.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of, I'm like, technical answers. So, let's say the CPA's estimate of how long it will take them to recoup their investment, and then they can prove, well, guess what, we still haven't. Is that a set drop-dead?
It's a set drop-dead, yes. It doesn't have to be to the penny. You're essentially determining based on the evidence of that appeal. That's your opportunity to demonstrate how long it's going to take, and the board is allowed to extrapolate based on expert testimony how long that should take.
Okay, thanks.
Counsel, other questions? Cindy, give another question?
Yes, so, what are we anticipating the cost of retaining these CPAs in these hearings? What is that going to cost the city for this particular amortization requirement?
That'd be applicant-driven. I can't speak to that if somebody requested to continue after the amortization period.
It would vary wildly, even if the cost of the CPA was modest. If the, there are a number of factors, including, number one, how forthcoming the business is with the information requested. If the business resists divulging the financial information, it would require that the city pursue an order from a District Court, because the Board of Adjustment, while it has statutory authority to compel certain things, enforcement itself needs to come from a District Court. And number two, it would also depend on whether the Board of Adjustment's order is appealed and then further appealed. Obviously, the District Court or County Court acts as the appellate court, but the business owner can continue to avail itself of its appellate remedies through the court system, Court of Appeals. The Texas Supreme Court has discretion on whether or not to take a case, but the Court of Appeals is mandatory, and so if it's appealed beyond the Board of Adjustment to the District Court, it can be further appealed to the Court of Appeals, and that could be a lengthy process, and the attorney's fees associated with it could far outreach the CPA fees.
Well, I know that, you know, the city projects a lot of costs in the future, and I would hope that they would also project these ballpark costs for this particular ordinance. Are we looking tens of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars each year, millions of dollars each year?
We're talking three non-conforming uses, which are payday lenders. So, you tell me. Your guess is as good as mine.
But, this is your job, your responsibility, so I can't answer that.
Well, my answer is, let's take a guess, because I don't know. Is that clear enough? Thanks. I have three points Mr. Mayor I'd like to share.
Sure.
One, to Councilmember Big Horse's point, this ordinance, like any other ordinance of the city, can be amended by the council at any time, following proper public hearings and statutory notification. If this proves to be onerous to existing businesses or future businesses, we can, and I recommend we should, change it in the future. Two, it's hard to envision this because this is a long-term project, but we're talking about brand-new development and redevelopment. So, the impact to existing businesses outside of the prohibitions and the SUPs likely is minimal. There's kind of a caveat that was added in the ordinance that exist, additions to non-conforming buildings could be increased up to 20% and not fall under the requirements of the overlay. So, if you want to expand your business that doesn't meet the requirement, you can do that up to 20% of the building. If you go over that, then you're subject to the new requirements. And again, I'm beating a dead horse for the last time. If you like what you see, and Saginaw Boulevard is what the council envisions for the future, there's no need to change. If not, I would recommend we make a change.
You also would have the option in terms of a less assertive approach, and again, I'm not endorsing any particular approach, but obviously, there's two parts to this, right? There's the part that is perspective in nature, new businesses coming in, essentially legislatively announcing what your preference is and what's not, no longer allowed within the corridor, and then there's the retroactive feature to this, which is the amortization. You could strip the ordinance of the amortization provision. You would still render these businesses to be legally non-conforming. They would still be subject to the limitations on expansion, reconstruction if they're destroyed, discontinuation, temporary discontinuation of the non-conforming use, and essentially loss of the entitlement that comes with being grandfathered. All of those features would still stay in place if you stripped the ordinance of the amortization provision, but that, so that, I just, I just want to make it clear. So, you do have options. There's more than just the all-or-nothing approach. It is a much slower pace, obviously, to strip it of the amortization. It's already going to be a marathon with the amortization provision in there, but that fact notwithstanding, it's, the alternative does not have to be not adopting anything.
Cindy?
So, I have one. So, the alternative, if we don't pass this, we can still rewrite the ordinance to something else. We don't have to go with this particular thing. I mean, we're not dead in the water. We don't have to continue to keep looking the way that we do.
You know, I think you can take action on what's before you. You can make it less restrictive. If there are substantial changes, I believe that'd have to go back through P&amp;Z.
Yes.
Public hearing, council, so, right. Right. What I would recommend, we've, I think this is the fifth public meeting we've had, I would recommend take action on something. Let's revisit it in a year or some time period agreed upon by the council and go from there. If amortization is causing heartburn, we'll have cash stores from now until the end of time in Saginaw, Texas. That's what that means, in reality.
Counsel, any other questions, counsel? Mary?
I just wanted to put one other plug in for this, which is, we've already delayed this almost a year, and I think we should not delay it any longer and take action.
Any other questions? I think we've sort of beaten this plenty, discussed it plenty. I want to entertain a motion.
Mayor, move that we adopt Mayor, move that we adopt ordinance number 2019-22, the overlay district, as presented.
Bren?
I'm sorry, may I ask, just for clarification, do, would you like to change the amortization 10-year deadline at all, or just leave it as is? Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. So, so the motion is as presented, approve as presented, that's correct? And Charlie, you'll second? Okay. All of the favor raised your right hand? All those opposed? Peter won? All right. Thank you. Thank you, staff. I know it's been a lot of work, a long time coming. Let's go get Ms. Valerie. Line number 11, any work plan? City manager, Gabe Raym.
Mayor and counsel, if you remember the game show, I think it was on ABC, Who Wants to be a Millionaire? So, one of the lifelines on Who Wants to be a Millionaire is phone a friend. So, I have several friends in the audience that happen to be chiefs or directors of their various departments. So, we'll run through the work plan. These are things you've seen before. There's some actions that would come from each department, and we're all here to answer any questions you might have. There's about 20 projects that are outlined by GOAL, which is in italic below each of these projects, that were identified by the city council through our strategic planning process in the past year. So, what I've done, based on our last discussion, is that number is the number of council members that have said this is a, a priority. So, for example, the first one, under financially sound city, providing superior services, economic development corporation framework, creation and funding, six council members at that time said that was a priority. So, the way we got these projects is any project that received a council majority, four or more, made the list. I'm not going to, unless you want me to, I'm not going to go through each project. We'll go to some of the action items, which, I don't know that I had a paper copy for everybody, and I apologize, but I, I'll send this out.
So, Gabe, before we go too far.
Yeah.
Have, have you outlined action items for each of these so far?
Yeah, for the most part, and, and.
Okay. That's pretty, it's, is it going to be, it's going to be pretty extensive, is what it sounds like.
Not really. I mean, we'll go over them. That's more on the, so what's important, and I think we're pretty well in agreement, is that the projects on the work plan are the ones that you want us to embark upon. So, if that's the case, we'll bring a resolution to adopt in the future, so the council take action, say, yes, these are our projects. This is staff's best guess as to the actions that may deliver progress toward those projects. So, this is an example that Laura prepared on the ED framework. We would create a exploratory committee of sorts that would look through this, kind of look at a, some bylaws or governing structure if the council wanted to create an EDC in the future. We've outlined some deliverables. Yeah. Staff lead generally in each of these projects is a director or a department. Many of these, and I've noted them in the document, either are addressed by the, could be addressed by the bond program or are already in motion now. So, we had a city facilities assessment that was presented back in March. That stands, it outlines future needs to build out population of the city. No need to duplicate that effort, and in fact, our bond committee is reviewing what was presented to you back then. Any action on facilities would be related to the bond program, more than likely. It all takes money. Lewis is part of our financial plan. Lewis McLean outlined citywide services and staffing. We kind of have done that with many things with ratios, and I expect that would stand. I don't see any substantial work unless it's requested to the council regarding staffing as we approach build out of 30-some thousand. Our long-range financial plan, for the most part, is substantially complete, so we are waiting to get the recommendation of the bond committee, which they're in their deliberation phase here at their next meeting. They may present to the council as soon as December or January what their recommendation for bond program would be. Once that's in place, I think it makes practical sense to bring back the financial plan and ask the council to take action, because that'll define potentially how much debt, how big our, our bond package, the debt sizing we talked about. And Lewis has his, what am I trying, game plan, they're laminated, that outlined all the numbers. We've got copies of those, if you'd like to review that. Code of Ordinances updated was, was outlined as a priority of the council. So, our code of ordinance, of course, are all the, the regulations of the city. They cover a great many things, public services, property standards. We're already working, and Rick in Public Works has been reviewing our subdivision ordinance as part of the Public Works accreditation program. I think that they have some recommendations that'll be coming to the council in the next month or two. Some of this issue's been the, our hands been forced with changes to the state legislature related to filing and planning and zoning-related items. It's been some time we may want to have, and this is just a thought, we may want to review our sign ordinance. It's fairly dated, probably something in need of review. If there's other items or things that you've heard in the community, the council, I'd like to hear, we can look at those. We'll assign somebody to, to review and bring recommendations going forward. But I think our subdivision ordinance, probably in the next couple of months, we have recommendations. And then I would probably recommend we review our sign ordinance.
So, just as an example here, going back to the first example, you had a number of tasks listed in the action page.
Right.
I'm seeing a single task on the public works staff review of subdivision ordinance, and it says time is ongoing.
Correct.
And, and really, what I envision in terms of an action plan is, is a measurable task. I don't know how that's measurable. How do we measure that?
So, we can put some, we can put some general dates when we think we can deliver, you know, January, February 20. If we want to review staff on subdivision, does that sound reasonable?
We can, we can put it to any level of detail that you want. I mean, I'll just tell you a little bit, just a history of subdivision ordinance revisions that you may not be aware of, but before I came on the city, about nine years ago or so, my predecessor, Bren and, and Kimley Horn, actually did a rewrite of most of the subdivision ordinance. For some reason, that never made it back to council for consideration. And so, we were in the process of reviewing that. In fact, Kimley Horn is reviewing some of the technical parts of the, of the subdivision ordinance currently. Then House Bill 3167 hit, which kind of, now we're having a rewrite of the rewrite of the rewrite. And so Bren is reviewing currently a revamp process to try to respond adequately to 3167. And after, if he concurs with our proposed process, then we will rewrite that. So, I mean, those are three or four steps that I've just mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
And we could put it to that level of detail, or we just say that we would, our goal is to bring it back to council in February of 2020. I mean, it's, it's really, what desire do you have as far as detail?
I mean, what, I guess really, it, it makes sense to me that we have 12 months in our, in our year, and if, if you guys can break down certain objectives for, say, each quarter.
Yeah.
I know that, that we are wanting to get together with you, Gabe, kind of as a quarterly review. It would be good to have in, in each of these areas, four milestones on your action plan that's measurable, that you can get with staff and say, hey, over a three-month period, what can we bite off? And with respect to what Rick has mentioned, one grouping or a work breakdown structure that would make sense to me is that anything that the legislature has preempted in our subdivision ordinances, at least identify those in the next three months and say, we've identified all of the preempted ordinances within our subdivision ordinances, and we need to either abolish them or rewrite them so that they are no longer preempted. And that would be like the first phase of the subdivision ordinance rewrite, addressing those that are now preempted with this latest legislative session.
I would agree with that. I think also that, like any project, I mean, it's going to be a dynamic document, the, the plan, so it may be more complicated as, as Bren and legal gets into the rewrite of the ordinance itself. I mean, the, to, to try to schematic the process is one thing, but to try to put the legalese language together.
No, I, I completely, I get it. I get it, Rick. That's the, that's the world that I operate in. But, you know, in order, in order to create an environment of accountability, you got to have a plan to begin with. I really don't think that an action plan should be, we're working on it. We, we, we do need to break it down into bite-sized chunks. So, at, at a minimum, when I look at the action plan for each of these projects, I would suggest if it looks like it's going to be a multi-year project, which some of these are, I mean, no doubt about it, they'll be multi-year, then break them down into, what can we do in the, in the 12-month period? And we'll have four milestones in that 12-month period that we're working to. And you know what? If we get to the first milestone, and we realize it falls into the legal abyss, like you're mentioning, and we've got to adjust for that, well, at least, you know what? We had a plan, and we know what's done, what has happened to impact that plan, and we can either course correct it, or we can say, guys, it's not going to be worth it to move forward with this. But let's break it down, in my mind, a minimum of four milestones a year per, per action page that we can measure, and we can sit down and, and claim success or claim, let's make adjustments.
Sure.
That make sense with the council?
I mean, that's for all of them, yeah. I think for everything, we should have as detailed as necessary, as required for the item, so.
Yeah, we, we can come back. Some of these projects are really related to other projects, so this is a good example. The Parks Board received a parks assessment, which was presented to the council, Kimley Horn. We don't have an official parks master plan. I guess we had a, well, I guess we do have a parks master plan that was kind of a class project.
We, we do have a master plan on file, but right, it was done by, I believe, UTA.
UTA did it, yeah, several years ago, right?
It may be in need of revisiting. I would recommend that trails, bikes, open space be consolidated in that effort. I think that the Parks Board is enthusiastic and able to work through a master plan-type document, if that's council's direction.
So, we did, didn't we have Kimley Horn do a parks assessment?
Right.
And they made some recommendations, and some of those recommendations weren't necessarily in alignment with the UTA study.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I think maybe to Gabe's point, I, I think that, and kind of at least my thinking and our thinking going forward was that, that the park assessment and then the, for lack of the better word, a master plan, the $30 million whole enchilada for the bond, become elements of revising the master plan. And then we would also incorporate, for example, the east side park that we've talked about, the landholdings that we have on the east side of the Boulevard for a, a regional park, which also corresponds to another goal with the, with the bike trail and things of that nature. So, I mean.
Sure.
And, and so then the question goes back to council, do you want to fund that? To go ahead, let's go ahead and build that, so we've got a model going forward that we can, you know, systematically attack that master plan and bring that to fruition. You know, a lot of these are, are money decisions, otherwise it's just going to sit on the shelf and.
I think we have a 2020 bond initiative, and we have a 2030 bond initiative. So, I don't know that there's one in the interim right now, considering the amount of money that we've been kicking around here on the dais. So, at 2030, there's a lot of, there's a lot more opportunity in 2030. But 2020, as long as our action plans are, we can digest that much in a 10-year period. I don't know that, or any of our plans right now should look beyond a 10-year horizon.
That's fair.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Traffic synchronization, these are, you know, as a first step, probably discussions with TechDOT, you know, long-term.
Seems to be the Rick Trish show.
Yeah.
Well, I have the 110-story building on the east side, too, if I could.
With an observation platform, you can look down and see what the traffic is.
Pen houses for all the councils, yeah, I think. We had a meeting in, in 2017 with TechDOT. There's, there's eight signals along the Boulevard. It's about $350,000 per signal. TechDOT has long-term plans to bring those to state-of-the-art, which will be monitored through their transvisions center there on McCarr at their headquarters, District 2 headquarters. That's on a two-year plan, so I, I've reached out to Billy Manning, they're over, over the traffic group to, to see what they're at on that. But again, that's just, those are, those are elements that are really beyond our control, and that's we want to advance those projects. And again, that's a money decision. Do you want to put up $350,000 per signal? $2.8 million, I believe, is how that comes out, to, to try to get that sooner. I mean, otherwise, we, we know at least what the steps are that, that's going to finally accomplish that, but, but that's under the control of TechDOT and not the city.
And we, we, for this, we'd like just lay out a plan, so this is our options, and council can address those options at the time and see if we want to move forward or not.
Yeah, I think we can probably get rough estimates for funding and fees, so.
It's the steps we would take, and.
Sure.
It's what it costs, yeah.
So, synchronization of traffic signals would, would be, and Valerie makes a good point. I mean, if it's $350,000 per traffic signal, we have six along the Boulevard, eight along the Boulevard. We're, we're in the $3 million range in terms of today cost, right? So, we don't know what that's going to look like in five years' cost. Could be another 20, 30% increase. So, if we're talking a $3 million investment in technology that may or may not work, quite frankly.
Well, and you still have to, I mean, the beauty of TechDOT's system is they'll be able to respond to the idiosyncrasies of the railroad. I mean, the railroad is not going to be the same animal every day of the week and, and every month of the year. I mean, it changes.
So, is it an algorithm, or is it a human?
It's not true synchronization, it's just the ability for them to monitor those intersections remotely and to tweak, you know, the phasing.
Okay.
So, it, but, but, but that is state-of-the-art. I mean, that's where it is today, and that's what their plan is today, so.
So, eight officers standing at those intersections over, over a course of time, I think we could chew up $3 million pretty quick.
We'll put that as an alternate.
Yeah. Okay.
We've done conceptual design for Knowles. Everybody, I think, is aware of the issues. It's an expensive project. It has drainage issues. This has been brought to the bond committee, likely the only way we could fund all our phases of it, so that potentially could be addressed. East McLroy would be in the same category. If we were to build it to its ultimate section in concrete, we don't have enough cash to do it. That likely would be a bond project. If it didn't elevate to the level of a bond project, we've, we've talked about, East McLroy takes a lot of truck traffic, as you know, our industrial core. We can do a, a reconstruction in asphalt with new curb and gutter for about a million, million-two, which we may have to address if we don't bond fund it. Is that fair ballpark number?
That's correct. And you might recall that we, we had an IPO for Kimley Horn that came through council months ago to, to go ahead and prepare construction documents to be prepared to bid. So, once the decision is made, whether or not McLroy, East McLroy would go as to the bond project or not, then we would. or not, then we would launch the maintenance approach to give extended life on that project, on that roadway.
Next project, this came up, code enforcement, and I think it came from the, so people get their courtesy notices. If you leave a trash can out, you get a notice, you know, hey, put it back in. Some people see that and assume it's a violation. It's not. I think that's where some of the issues regarding code came up. I don't remember, it's been some time. I would recommend that Larry Little, Lisa Newsome, in the near future, we do an update, workshop format, about our rental registration program. It's pretty eye-opening. They're doing good work there to try to keep some of our rental units in the state a good repair. We can also address any other issues related to code enforcement that might be out there. There's been a few instances of vacation-type rentals or short-term rentals. We have a few houses that are, I guess, Airbnbs, that have caused some, you know, traffic and have irritated the neighbors. That may be something we look at. If there's anything else, other than a workshop or some direction, happy to carry that forward or maybe we wait until a future workshop and you can hear from code staff.
Yeah, let's discuss this more at a workshop. I think that would be a good use of our time.
Park Master Plan, we've already kind of mentioned. We may pitch that to the Parks Board and kind of button it up and create an amended document that would also address trails. Taking action this evening on the overlay district. Again, that's a long-term, 20-plus-year change horizon. Outline some spots, so this is probably one of the more interesting projects, potential to relocate the armory. I really think if that's the council's desire, we would probably need to engage the services of a lobbyist, somebody that could tell us whether this is viable or not, and outline some actionable steps.
I mean, our first foray into this was not well-received, so.
Yeah, the, right, the Texas, we went through Senator Jay Nelson's office, who directed us to the Texas Military Division. They, their response was, there's no plans to move the facility. You know, maybe there's some method to encourage a second look or, I just, I honestly don't know outside, maybe engaging a lobbyist.
I think that's probably the right approach, is to get somebody who would know how to create that environment, that desire, and see if it makes sense. I mean, we all know it represents a gigantic truck. It is a chunk of our industrial core.
Yeah, I mean, just for perspective, we could get two, if not three, Venture Foods on the footprint that the armory's there. It'd be a great asset. It all comes down to cost, you know? It may be cost prohibitive to even entertain that, so. Municipal Center Master Plan, we've kind of talked about this in the context of the facility assessment. PGAL looked at our facilities, future space needs. They also looked at the idea of a streetscape, so especially here on McLroy, over time, creating improvements that create kind of a unique look and feel. So some of those things could be, you know, wider sidewalks, little pocket parks along McLroy, landscaping features, that sort of thing. We haven't commissioned them to do any preliminary design for a streetscape. That's the council's desire. We can do that. We're pretty lucky in that the majority of our municipal facilities are all in a row, so it's kind of easy, or a little easier to create a sense of place when we control several buildings in a corridor. So I'm excited, as you all are, for, you know, the improvements that are going on in Willow Creek Park, that would all tie into the corridor, maybe something we look at in the future.
Well, we did, wasn't there a conceptual plan drawn that showed kind of pedestrian walkways, maybe some head-in parking or something along those lines?
Yeah, Kimley Horn had some concepts that they presented, I guess, as part of McLroy. I don't think they, I don't think they've finished that work effort, because we were waiting.
No, no, I just remember seeing something at some point.
You're right.
Maybe in the last 12 months.
No, you're right. It would have been when Jeff Buller presented. They had a few renderings, but if we wanted to...
Yeah, I want to interject, and just for your information, in the next month's P&amp;Z meeting and then followed up, of course, with the council, we have a master thoroughfare plan amendment that will address McLroy to make that more of a collector-type roadway through the city center here, through, next to City Hall, Library, et cetera. You're physically constrained by the right-of-way and buildings, the cemetery, the school on either side, so we think that'll be more of a traffic calming, more of a, and there will be on-street parking as part of that cross-section. So you'll be seeing that master thoroughfare plan amendment the second meeting of next month.
So you think it'd be pretty consistent with what we saw before?
It would provide the opportunity for that to happen. In fact, it would give many options. It's going to reduce the right-of-way requirement from 100 down to 80 and, which would allow you to make it a five-lane, undivided section, or you can divide it with a median or extra-wide parkways, or you would have all sorts of options, as far as making that more pedestrian-friendly.
So that particular action item, again, just populating those with four things over the course of the year.
Yeah, and I don't want us to go dive too deep into this stuff. We can discuss.
Yeah, we'll move through. This was the assessment that was presented, I believe, in March, and I think there was one slide, that's one of them.
Yep.
So that's our kind of campus feel. I think there was a slide related to streetscape somewhere in there.
It was a site plan.
Create a town center, it was that one. So widen sidewalks, make them more walkable, on-street parking, you know, more of a...
More of a Roanoke.
Hangout type spot, yeah.
That Boulevard.
Go back to the...
You want to say McLroy?
No, I don't want to go any more, any deeper into this. We're good, let's keep going.
Transpharm property, there's a, my understanding, the owners are close to selling it. They have prepared a land plan that'll make its way at some point. It's kind of the ball's in their court through P&amp;Z and the city council. Community policing, I believe this was the one item on the action plan that every council member said was their priority. No surprise. Talking with the chief, we're, the department's doing a lot of community policing things. I think we probably just need to get them an opportunity to present a workshop and talk about some of those things, so. If there's any. Also might add that it's No Shave November, so, well done, sir. We're close to the end here. Part of our citywide ADA assessment improvements were noted in parks. I sent that copy of all the ADA noted deficiencies and costs to the city council and our bond committee. It's one of those things we'll tackle a piece at a time. I think facility-wise and parks-wise, it was about 1.3 million. So as we replace parks amenities, they'll come up to code, just like facilities. We've kind of addressed the senior center with our facility assessment as far as space needs. Don't have much more to add. I put this in green. Our bond package could potentially touch each of these projects in various facets, so stay tuned to what the committee will recommend in the next month or so and we'll be happy to come back with you pretty soon.
Council, any questions for Gabe? All right. Thank you, sir.
So just to clarify, we want to see at the end of 12 months, where we want to be on each of these projects in a minimum of four actionable items or milestones for each.
I wouldn't say four, I'd say whatever is appropriate level detail for that item. It could be three, it could be six, it depend on the item. I wouldn't want to say...
A minimum of four?
I wouldn't want to say a minimum. I don't know if necessarily they would need, I think it's, would be a case-by-case basis is what makes sense, so.
Okay. As long as it's measurable. That's the, I mean, that's truly the objective here, is to make it measurable.
Specific, measurable, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay, so eight o'clock, we're out of a, we're reconvening back into regular session out of our workshop. We will reconvene, we will convene into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.087 to discuss building improvement grant applications. So eight o'clock, we are in executive session. We will return to adjourn.
For what? What are you going to see me for?
January. I wish they knew in my backyard. I get to see late Saturday. Is it his fault? I said it.
Tell all the rain where you're going. How about, you know, wait a second, all six months of full.
Well, it used to be so much worse. Yeah, yeah. It was interesting, no?